Welcome to the Goodyear City Council meeting. Welcome to the Goodyear City Council meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes and there is a timer visible from the podium. You'll have a maximum of three minutes and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular council agenda on the 13th. I'd like to call to order the regular council agenda on the 13th. Please, excuse me, please join Councilmember Hampton to pledge allegiance followed by the invocation. Please, excuse me, please join Councilmember Hampton to pledge allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lord, for today. Thank you, Lord, for today. Thank you for the city. Thank you for the city. Thank you for our country. Thank you for our country. Be with those that serve our city and our country abroad. Be with those that serve our city and our country abroad. Thank you for the staff as they work for the good of the city and the community. Thank you for the staff as they work for the good of the city and the community. I ask that you give the council wisdom and discernment in decisions that we make I ask that you give the council wisdom and discernment in decisions that we make as we make the city better for the residents. as we make the city better for the residents. And I just thank you for just the many blessings that you've given us. And I just thank you for just the many blessings that you've given us. Just thank you and in your name, amen. Just thank you and in your name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. Thank you, Councilmember Hampton. All right, let's start the roll call. All right, let's start the roll call. Everyone is here except Councilmember Stip. Everyone is here except Councilmember Stip. Can I get a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Stip? Can I get a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Stip?
So moved, second. So moved, second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Kano and a second from Councilmember Loretano. I heard a motion from Councilmember Kano and a second from Councilwoman Loretano. So I'd like to, before we begin, I'd like to open for an open discussion and I'd like to make a statement. So I'd like to, before we begin, I'd like to open for an open discussion and I'd like to make a statement. As the mayor, I understand professional or personal schedules may create conflicts As the mayor, I understand professional or personal schedules may create conflicts and not all council meetings can be attended. and not all council meetings can be attended. But when I contemplate the number of meetings someone could call in for or be excused for, But when I contemplate the number of meetings someone could call in for or be excused for, I am troubled by the fact that's not all of the voices have been at the table I am troubled by the fact that's not all of the voices have been at the table to make important decisions for the future Goodyear. to make important decisions for the future Goodyear. I recently noted a pattern of excusing Councilmember Stip from a number of meetings I recently noted a pattern of excusing Councilmember Stip from a number of meetings in which I feel is excessive. in which I feel is excessive. So today, my vote is going to be no. So today, my vote is going to be no. And now, if there's any other discussion, I need a motion. And now, if there's any other discussion, I need a motion. Is that for this now to discuss or can I just go discuss? Is that for this now to discuss or can I just go discuss?
Madam Mayor, you already have a motion and a second. Madam Mayor, you already have a motion and a second. You opened it for discussion. You opened it for discussion.
All right, so I'm opening this discussion. All right, so I'm opening this discussion. Anybody on the council want to join in this discussion? Anybody on the council want to join in this discussion? So nobody wants to join, so roll call. So nobody wants to join, so roll call.
Did someone say something? Did someone say something?
No, you had mentioned earlier that this was going to be a discussion at a retreat. No, you had mentioned earlier that this was going to be a discussion at a retreat.
Yes. Yes.
So I'll hold off discussion until we have that. So I'll hold off discussion until we have that.
And we are going to have that. And we are going to have that.
Yeah, we'd like to have that. Yeah, we'd like to have that.
Okay, so that is definitely, but I wanted to make this known at this time, okay? Okay, so that is definitely, but I wanted to make this known at this time, okay? And I could go through the numbers and he's within his means on one of them. And I could go through the numbers and he's within his means on one of them. But I'm discussing about the total work sessions with the total meetings, But I'm discussing about the total work sessions with the total meetings, the other meetings, the regular meetings, and the special meetings and the execs meetings. the other meetings, the regular meetings, and the special meetings and the execs meetings. So we are all responsible for doing the best we can and we're elected to be here. So we are all responsible for doing the best we can and we're elected to be here. So I understand people being not excused. So I understand people being not excused. While I did this research, you got, one time Bill didn't excuse you. While I did this research, you got, one time Bill didn't excuse you. He voted against you. He voted against you.
He did. He did.
He did, so. He did, so. And so when you start looking in the record, you can see. And so when you start looking in the record, you can see. And then I just bring this because I want you to have a serious discussion on this when we have the retreat. And then I just bring this because I want you to have a serious discussion on this when we have the retreat.
Can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question?
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
When this goes to the retreat, are we going to get like ideas of what other councils do and everything? When this goes to the retreat, are we going to get like ideas of what other councils do and everything?
Yes, yes, we are. Yes, yes, we are. And you'll be very surprised. And you'll be very surprised. I had dinner with most of them and they have rules. I had dinner with most of them and they have rules. And so I just kind of put it forth and I'm not going to tell you the conversation, I think, wouldn't be fair. And so I just kind of put it forth and I'm not going to tell you the conversation, I think, wouldn't be fair. But we'll have all that information for you so that you can make a good decision. But we'll have all that information for you so that you can make a good decision. And of course, it always has to be your decision. And of course, it always has to be your decision. It doesn't have to be the mayor's. It doesn't have to be the mayor's. But I feel this is very important to the future of Goodyear But I feel this is very important to the future of Goodyear and with all the business and everything we have going on in this city, and with all the business and everything we have going on in this city, to continue the pattern does worry me, so. to continue the pattern does worry me, so. All right, so roll call vote, please. All right, so roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano? Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Kano? Councilmember Kano?
Aye. Aye.
Mayor Lord? Mayor Lord?
No. No.
The motion carries. The motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. So let's just go on. So let's just go on. So upon roll call, we will convene into an executive session as posted pursuant to the ARS 38-431.03A 3 and 4, So upon roll call, we will convene into an executive session as posted pursuant to the ARS 38-431.03A 3 and 4, Discussion and Consultation with the City Attorney for Legal Advice and Direction on Litigation Matters, Discussion and Consultation with the City Attorney for Legal Advice and Direction on Litigation Matters, Celia versus City of Goodyear. Celia versus City of Goodyear. Could I have a motion and a second? Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved. So moved. Second. Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano? Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton? Councilmember Hampton?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Kano? Councilmember Kano?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Lord? Mayor Lord?
Aye. Aye.
The motion carries. The motion carries.
All right, we will now convene into an executive session. All right, we will now convene into an executive session.
...
Well, this is great, and I remember the past years and all the wonderful celebrations, and so it's an exciting time for the young people. So, let's stand together as we look at this. Kids to Park Day, May 18th, 2019. Whereas May 18th, 2019 is the ninth Kids to Park Days organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held only on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit American parks, and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's park, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and high cholesterol. Whereas Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. Whereas the Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now therefore, I, Georgia Lord, Mayor of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2019 as Kids to Park Day, and I urge residents of Goodyear to make time to take their children in their lives to their neighborhood, state, and national park. Given under my hand are these free United States and City of Goodyear, Arizona, on the 13th day of May, 2019, to which I have caused the seal of the City of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. And let me tell you how pleased we are, the performances, the things you do for the children in our parks. So thank you very much, so give this to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then let's go to the consent agenda. The agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 9.1 through 9.6 by title only?
9.1, adopt resolution number 2019-1934 authorizing the city to enter into the AZWARN mutual aid agreement among members of the Arizona Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network, and authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents related thereto. 9.2, approve a final plat for Estrella Parcel 9.3118-520-00025, subject to stipulations, and adopt resolution number 2019-1958, conditionally vacating and abandoning a portion of a street known as West Mountain Vista Drive, providing for an effective date of abandonment and imposing requirements and conditions for the abandonment to become effective, and imposing a deadline for completion of the abandonment. 9.3, accept two public utility sidewalk and access easements associated with the AZ-11 Vantage Data Centers project. 9.4, approve the issuance of a temporary non-exclusive slope easement to construct and maintain bank stabilization facilities in the Bullard Wash. 9.5, accept the recommendation of the audit subcommittee selecting Hinton-Birdic PLLC to perform the annual audit of the city's financial statements. 9.6, adopt resolution number 2019-1969 approving development agreement for Estrella Parcel 9.31, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution and development agreement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, there is.
All right.
Sterling Bell?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm coming to you today.
Could you pull that microphone a little, get a little closer to it?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council. My name is Sterling Bell. I live in Australia Mountain Ranch. My address is 18419 West Bourbona Drive. My house is the house adjacent or just to the north of the new parcel that's going in. I, along with the houses to the west of me, all paid an extensive amount for a view fence. I came to the city council before. I also came to the building meetings when they were zoning to ask that, you know, all the view fences, if they're going to put houses, you know, we understand progress happens, but to leave the view fences clear. All view fences, with the exception of mine, I now have two houses that are going to be in my backyard if this plot stays the same. The only thing that, and I've written letters to Nuland, to the project manager. I also went down, once the, you know, I saw the plot come out, what was going to be there. I went down to the plotting office to ask, you know, what's coming? How is this going to be laid out? I was told this is the meeting that I had to come to to ask that this be removed and at least taken back to zoning to have that moved over. There's a wash behind. All they would have to do is extend that wash by another 15 to 20 feet, and that would take that wash over, removing the houses that would be behind mine and all view, full view, and it's a full view fence. All the houses to the east of mine have block walls. So anyone with a house behind theirs would be just like any other neighborhood. They would have a block wall behind theirs, but full view fences, all again, except for mine, had the, had their view still available and mine not being so. And that's what I'm asking is that 9.2, one more, one more again be placed back into zoning, or not zoning, but building to at least ask that they make that adjustment.
Well, thank you, coming before us, and will the staff take note of that and get back to?
Actually, Mayor, I believe that if there's action to approve that tonight, that it wouldn't go back to staff.
That's correct. If you want to make adjustments to the final plat, that need to happen before the approval tonight. So I don't know if we need, if the council's going to have questions, you may want to handle it off of the consent agenda, if that makes sense.
All right, so don't approve
Yeah.
that one, approve the other, and then bring staff up?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you handle the remainder of the consent items and pull that one off consent?
Okay, so that was item number?
9.2.
Can't hear you.
9.2?
9.2. Okay, so then I'm going to ask a motion for 9.1, 9.3, 9.4, 9.5, and 9.6. A motion is second. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Hampton, a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
So do we bring staff up now? Okay, so.
Katie.
Who is going to take care of that?
9.2, I guess Katie, huh?
So 9.2.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The parcel in question tonight is parcel 9.31. The preliminary plat was approved at the, in October of 2018, so just last year.
I'm sorry, can you push the microphone to where you're leaning so we can hear that? I didn't hear the date.
I think.
And will you show the parcel in question again, please, Alex?
Yes. I stapled them all together.
Take your time. We'd rather have it so we can see it.
Okay, this is an overall of Montecito. The parcel in question tonight is parcel 9.31. Mr. Bell lives in 9.6, just to the north. In September of 2018, so just at the end of last year, the preliminary plat came before the council and approved 42 lots that are recommended for approval for final plating tonight. I believe this is Mr. Bell's lot. There's approximately 90 feet between his backyard and the lot he's mentioning. The parcel was originally in the 2008 Montecito ordinance was planned to be a school site. In, when we updated the Montecito PAD, Mr. Bell did attend those meetings and discussed the view behind him. So Nuland made the restriction that a minimum of 40 feet, which like I said, this is about 90, separated between the rear yard of view fencing and any new proposed lots, and that this parcel will specifically be limited to single-story. So these, all these lots will be one-story homes. And like I said, a little, I believe it's 90 feet between his backyard fence and the proposed lot that he's referring to. He is the last home on this block to have full view fencing. Just to the east of him, it is partial view fencing. The view fencing is put in by the home builder and not submitted for a view by staff.
Council comments? Do we understand, does any, all of us really thoroughly understand what was just said and?
Yeah, Alex, is this a wash?
The wash?
90 feet, you were saying, between his property and the next property?
I think it is a wa, just a second. Christopher's going to pull up the aerial so we can double check.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We are double checking on the, if it is a wash, but regardless, it is open space, and so people can walk back through there, connect throughout the neighborhood.
So just so I'm clear, was the complaint a view? Blocking a view? Or that the property is too close?
He said it's blocking the view.
Blocking the view, okay.
The view of what?
So.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I believe this lot here is the lot in question.
337?
337. And so the location of Lot 1 on the final plat you're considering tonight here?
This one?
Yes. And to try and summarize, I believe the question is, can this lot be moved or removed?
Which lot is his, which home site is his?
This 337.
Okay, all right.
Because it's located directly behind him. And the justification he's saying is because the, from this home westward, all have full view lot fencing. Lot 336 starts a partial view lot fencing.
So these are new home sites here that are being put up back there?
These lots up here?
Okay.
Those, what, did you find they were platted in 2006?
2014 is when it was recorded.
Oh, is when it was recorded. It was one of those that was hanging out there for a very long time, so it wasn't recorded till 2014. So those are new homes.
So I understand, because I'm not reading this, okay? So let's go to home site 1 and the land behind that. All across, is that being developed?
No. So.
Okay, there.
So this is the area in question. This area here is a park.
All right.
And then this area over here is planned for a single-family residential. It was formerly a school site, and then with the rezoning of Montecito that happened somewhat recently, that was rezoned to single-family with a one-story restriction.
And show me his home site.
I think I have it highlighted. Can you see it right here?
Okay, all right.
And so the argument the resident is making is that the view fencing is what should delineate the park site versus the single-family home. I bought this home. It had full view fencing. That would indicate to me, as someone purchasing a home, that there was going to be park or no development behind my home. The city doesn't regulate where the view fencing goes. We encourage view fencing where it makes sense near open space areas, but it's up to the individual home builder to determine which homes are going to have view fencing and how much view fencing, whether it's going to be the full view fencing or a partial view fencing. So it was up to the home builder to determine where that view fencing went and how, how much view fencing. So the fact that the home builder chose to put that lot as full view fencing wasn't determining where that park versus residential line was.
Right, okay. Yes.
I want to clarify.
Councilwoman Loretano?
Oh, if you could go back to the visual, because I live up there, and I know my neighborhood, we've got full view fencing, so it's like this much, and then the rest is view fencing. We have a wash, and then we have probably about 45 feet on the other side, full view fencing. So you do have houses, but you've got that wash in between both the full view fencing. So my question is, the little strip is going up and down. Yes, that strip, what is that strip behind those houses?
Mayor and Council, so as Alex indicated, it's approximately 90 feet, and this is an aerial of that same area, and it is.
9.2, I guess Katie, huh?
So, 9.2.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the parcel in question, tonight is parcel 9.31, the preliminary plat was approved at the, in October of 2018, so just last year.
I'm sorry, can you push the microphone to where you're leaning, so we can hear that? I didn't hear the date.
Um, I think, let me just...
And will you show the parcel in question again, please, Alex?
Yes. I stapled them all together.
Take your time, we'd rather have it, so we can see it.
Okay, this is an overall of Montecito. The parcel in question tonight is parcel 9.31. Mr. Bell lives in 9.6, just to the north. In September of 2018, so just at the end of last year, the preliminary plat came before the council and approved forty-two lots that are recommended for approval for final plating tonight. I believe this is Mr. Bell's lot. There's approximately ninety feet between his backyard and the lot he's, he's mentioning. The parcel was originally, in the 2008 Montecito ordinance, was planned to be a school site. In, when we updated the Montecito P A D, Mr. Bell did attend those meetings and discussed the, the view behind him. So, Nuland made the restriction that a minimum of forty feet, which like I said, this is about ninety, separated between the rear yard of view fencing and any new, new proposed lots, and that this parcel will specifically be limited to single-story. So, so these, all these lots will be one-story homes, and like I said, a little, I believe it's ninety feet between his backyard fence and the proposed lot that he's referring to. He is the last home on this block to have full view fencing, just to the east of him, it is partial view fencing. The view fencing is put in by the home builder, and not submitted for review by staff.
Council comments? Do we understand, does any, all of us really thoroughly understand what was just said, and...
Well, yeah, Alex, is this a wash?
The wash, um...
Ninety feet, you were saying, between his property and the next property?
I think it is a wash. Just a second. Christopher's gonna pull up the aerial, so we can double check.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We are double checking on the, if it is a wash, but regardless, it is open space, and so people can walk back through there, connect throughout the neighborhood.
I didn't get what his main complaint was. Well, I thought he said he was gonna block his view. Oh, yeah, but these are one-story houses, and they're ninety feet from him, so they're not blocking him.
So, just so I'm clear, was the, the complaint a view, blocking a view, or that the property is too close?
He said it's blocking the view.
Blocking the view, okay.
The view of what?
So...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, I believe this lot here, right, is the lot in question?
337?
337.
Okay.
And so, the location of Lot 1, on the final plat you're considering tonight, here?
This one?
Yes. And to try and summarize, I believe the question is, can this lot be moved or removed?
Which, which lot is his, which home site is his?
This 337.
Okay, all right.
Because it's located directly behind him. And the justification he's saying is because the, from this home, westward, all have full view lot fencing. Lot 336 starts a partial view lot fencing.
So, these are new home sites here, that are being put up back there?
These lots up here?
Okay.
Those, what, did you find they were platted in 2006?
So, are these already settled?
2014 is when it was recorded.
Oh, is when it was recorded, it was one of those that was hanging out there for a very long time, so it wasn't recorded till 2014. So, those are new homes.
So, so I understand, 'cause I'm not reading this, okay, so, let's go to home site 1, and the land behind that, all across, is that being developed?
No. So...
Okay, there, that...
So, this is the area in question. This area here is a park.
All right.
And then this area over here is planned for a single-family residential. It was formerly a school site, and then with the rezoning of Montecito that happened somewhat recently, that was rezoned to single-family with a one-story restriction.
And show me his home site.
I think I have it highlighted. Can you see it right here?
Okay, all right.
And so, the argument the resident is making is that the view fencing is what should delineate the park site versus the single-family home. I bought this home, it had full view fencing, that would indicate to me, as someone purchasing a home, that there was gonna be park or no development behind my home. The city doesn't regulate where the view fencing goes. We encourage view fencing where it makes sense, near open space areas, but it's up to the individual home builder determine which homes are gonna have view fencing, and how much view fencing, whether it's gonna be the full view fencing or a partial view fencing. So, it was up to the home builder to determine where that view fencing went, and how, how much view fencing. So, the fact that the home builder chose to put that lot as full view fencing, wasn't determining where that park versus residential line was.
Right, okay, yes.
And I just wanna clarify...
Councilwoman Lortano?
Oh, if you could go back to the visual, 'cause I live up there, and I know my neighborhood, we've got full view fencing, so it's like this much, and then the rest is view fencing, we have a wash, and then we have probably about forty-five feet on the other side, full view fencing, so you do have houses, but you've got that wash in between the, both the full view fencing. So, my question is, the little strip, is going up and down? Yes, that strip, what is that strip behind those houses?
Mayor and Council, so as Alex indicated, it's approximately ninety feet, and this is an aerial of that same area, and it is, it does appear to be a wash.
And it will not be developed? Nothing's built?
No, ma'am, it is, it is not going to be developed, the extent of where the homes are going to be is reflected in this particular plat, and it is ninety, approximately ninety feet from that rear property line to the north.
That's quite a bit, two ninety's.
Yes, ma'am. And if the council, Mayor, if I may, if the council recalls, we had significant discussions regarding the view fencing and so forth, and the views of this particular residential community to the south, looking south, rather, during that zoning hearing in January of 2018, I believe it was.
And I, yes, Councilman?
Is the, the aerial view that came in our packet, it looks like there's a planned park, is that still planned? So, that would be adjacent to, or west of Lot 1, and so, in reality, looking out that, he will be, have access to view the park?
So, Mayor and Council, so, yes, this area right here, where my finger is, is the park, and this is the corner of the property right there, that's in, in question, so to the west of there, you're exactly right, is a park.
Thank you.
Was 931 going to be a school? So, he was gonna look at a school?
Yes.
And now, he's going, instead of looking at a school, he's going to, which is, will be more than one story, generally, sometimes, maybe, could be.
Could be.
Then there's gonna be one-story houses instead?
Correct.
Are they going to have a view fence, or will they have a solid fence?
That is at the discretion of the home builder, okay.
Christopher, were you gonna say something?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would also just like to point out, so if the council has any questions about Nuland's interaction with the particular resident, Mr. Teiki is here, and he can answer those questions for you.
Well, let's, yes, Brandon?
I said a comment real quick. Yeah, so I was actually in his backyard last week, so I saw the view, and I saw how, how it, how it looked, and it looks like he has, like, half of his view should be the park, if you stand in one corner, and the other half would be across the, you can already see the, the, the plots already up, where the dirt is being moved, and there is a wash there, I didn't know how far it was, so I didn't realize it was ninety feet, but, but yeah, so, I was, I was there, and was able to see what it looks like, and...
And what was your opinion?
Different view faces, view fences, I mean, I mean, I think he has, I could see from his point where view fence, view fence, view fence, and he's the last one on that view fence section, so, he, I think he felt that he would also like the same view as the other five people that are there as well, so, and then it changes after that point, so I can see from his point of view that he would like it to be the same as the other five.
Of course, when...
But, it did, it did change, and we did vote on that back in, like, six months ago.
When the house was built, this house was built, there was nothing there, right? Okay, all right, so...
But you don't buy a view?
Yeah, this is always very difficult, and, and, and I always appreciate the homeowner's angst and desire, but as a past, now, I repeat my story again, as a past sales representative for National Builder, you cannot buy, you cannot buy scenery or views, it's not for sale. What you buy is that plat where the house is put, and that is, all right you have, unless there was something contractually put in, that would change that. So, I can understand your concern, and that you wanted it, or assumed that it was going to look one way, and it didn't turn out that way. And I try to always warn people, if there is a space, a home site or industrial site behind you, there's nothing on it, by law, they have a constitutional right to put what they want up, as long as it meets the zoning guidelines. So, in this case, they had the right, and the only one, to me, that you may want to talk to, and I don't know if they would change that, is if somebody would help you with the fence, but there's not required to, I can't imagine that, that would be the case. Anybody, any more comments?
I don't know if Peter wants to come up, or not?
I can't hear you, you gotta speak into the microphone.
I don't know if you want Pete to come up, or not? If it matters?
I don't know, would they, Pete, would you like to come up and say some words? We appreciate this, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, as I, as they had mentioned, the, the original zoning was for a school, the school just recognized they didn't need two so close together, and, and let us go ahead and rezon the property at that time. We did the two meetings through the P A D, we did the first one, listened to quite a bit of concern from various residents, and what we did is we ended up with a, the original, does this, I've never used this, but, you can see right here is the original plan, that when we went into the first meeting and showed the residents, took note of all the concerns, went back, and then made the decision that we would turn that park, you can see the one area was the park, we were gonna make it residential, and then we were gonna put in a different linear park, with all the concerns, we just felt the right thing to do was take it back to a park, and then we also agreed at that time that we would, we would go ahead and stip the project to single-story, which you can see right here, highlighted, that's actually from our purchase and sale contract, that it's, it's on the plat as well, but we made sure the builder understood they have to be single-story homes, just to keep those down, we, we also felt that a single-story home was gonna be a lower height than a school, so it, it seemed like the right thing to do. Then the other thing we did, when I went into design, was, I know you probably can't see this very well, but, the reason that we have so much distance there was, I asked the engineer to take every lot down to the minimum depth absolutely possible, so that we stayed as far away from that, that parcel as, as possible, so you can see, what the numbers are here don't include, there's another about ten-foot tract right there, you can see the property line, and then the, the lot, so, we did everything we could to stay away from those lots, and, and if you've seen some of our stuff, typically, we'll, we'll be in the forty to sixty-foot range, so, some of these areas, we doubled that, so we were just trying to be very cautious with it, taking note on all the comments we got. The one thing I did also want to mention is, this area's actually got a little bit of, it's retention, and then it's just a landscape open space tract where, where they may, or may not, put just like a little trail to come through, so they can cut through here to get out to the park, so it's not a wash, but it is some retention and landscaping. So, if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Let me ask the council, any questions?
No.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the explanation. All right, Council, it's time to vote on this, so I need a motion, and a second, to approve item 9.2.
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilwoman Lortano.
Oh, no, it's Councilwoman Kano, it's just, she's in the first.
Counselwoman Kano, okay, so, should we do a roll call vote on this? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lourd?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, great, let's go down to business, I'd like to remind the council to wait until there's a motion on the table for any questions to the discussion, let's start out with 10.1 on business, intergovernmental agreement with the City of Glendale to utilize the Glendale landfill. Adam Kurt, Solid Grace Superintendent, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. As you're aware, the city recently awarded a seven-year contract to right-of-way disposal for curbside trash and recycling services. With the contract, our residents and city staff can utilize their 19th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Transfer Station, however, this, since this location is a little bit further, we, we began to explore closer alternatives. The Glendale landfill was one of these alternatives. We reached out to them, and they were receptive to the idea of allowing our residents and city staff to use our landfill at a contracted rate. Some clear benefits of using this landfill would be its location and pricing. Although not part of the request tonight, I did want to mention that in addition to our residents being able to use RAD's location, we're also working on securing contracted rates at the White Tings Transfer Station and the Southwest Regional Landfill. We will make sure that the residents are aware of these options on our website once we've completed this process. Once again, I'm only asking for your approval of the I G A with Glendale. Approval of the I G A would secure another location for our residents and city staff to use. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, would anybody in the audience like to speak? And can I have a motion and a second to authorize the inner, an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Glendale? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, a second from Councilman Pizzillo, open for council discussion? No discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is 10.2 on business, to approve the extension of the Vista at Palm Valley final plat approval. Joe Schmidt, Long Range Planner, presenting, Joe?
Hello, Mayor and Council. As you noted, this is a relatively straightforward request for an extension of the final plat approval that was granted to Vistas at Palm Valley back in February of this year. The subdivider is Meritage Homes, and I'm sure the council is well aware of the project and where it's located. We thought that we had had the final plat just about ready to go, but the subdivider encountered some difficulties and some delays that were unanticipated. One in particular was the, their ability to get a certificate of assured water supply through the process at A D W R. So, they're continuing to work on that now. Once that's obtained, that will set the stage for Liberty Utilities to sign off on the final plat, and then it can move toward recording. So, what, the request tonight is to simply extend that original approval for an additional ninety days.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the ninety-day extension of the Vistas at Palm Valley final plat approval? Do I hear a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second from Councilwoman Lortano, open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
Just a question on the process itself. I know it was a golf course when it came forth for the preliminary, when would they typically get that assured water supply at the final, at the preliminary plat?
Mayor Lourd, Councilwoman Pizzillo, it's usually, at least the process is usually started at about the preliminary plat. This one has, and normally it's completed in about three to four months. This one has taken longer because of A D W R implementing a new water model, and it's taken more time to complete their analysis. The applicant has indicated that they are hoping that they'll get their certificate by the end of the month, and this additional ninety days will get them, get them time to complete that.
What happens when the ninety, if the ninety days expires?
I believe the final plat rules are that you only get one extension, and then they would have to basically get scheduled before the council again for reapproval of the final plat as opposed to an extension.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I was going to ask Joe why we're not asking for a hundred and twenty, just to be on the safe side, so they don't have to come back if they don't get it, if D W R is moving that slow.
Mayor Lourd, Council, Vice Mayor Campbell, the provisions in the subdivision regulation says that the extension is ninety days, I don't believe it provides for an additional term, and so, at least at this point, we didn't consider it. Hopefully, they can complete it within the next ninety days, and we won't have to worry about it.
Okay, once it's completed, will they actually start building? I know they've graded the ground, but that's all they've been able to do.
Mayor Lourd, and Vice Mayor Campbell, once again, I believe that the subdivider developer is anxious to get started, and they would have been building already if they hadn't had this delay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
All right, I think, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So, Council, let's vote on, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. All right, we're at the information line, does Council have any comments or updates? All right, we'll move right through this, then. City Manager, you have the floor?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I wanted to discuss with Council, there had been a previous request to have a work session regarding texting while driving, and of course, the state has gone ahead and moved forward, the state legislature passed, and the governor has signed a texting while driving bill, and so we will remove that from the queue for council work sessions, if that's agreeable. And then the second item is I wanted to invite all of our residents in our community to the Goodyear Fire EMS Open House this Saturday. The Goodyear Fire Department is hosting the Open House from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Fire Station 183 next to our community park. It's a free safety event, gives the public an opportunity to meet their emergency medical professionals, learn hands-only CPR, and stop the bleed first aid, so we hope everyone can join us, thank you.
Thank you. You have any, Council, do you have anything for the City Manager? No? Okay, I think we're closing this up. The next meeting will be a work session on May 20th, 2018, at 5:00 o'clock, followed by a C F B meeting, and then a regular meeting. So, no further business, this meeting is adjourned.